Notice that this meeting has been posted on the Secretary of State's website. With us, we have Chairwoman Page and another school committee member with us this evening. And I'm going to turn this portion over to Chairwoman Page, who then I believe Dr. Ogier may have some preliminary information to share before we open this up to the public.
Thank you for coming here tonight, or coming to our venue, so we appreciate that. And I actually am going to turn the rate over to Dr. Ogier, pretty much to start off with.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everyone. You know, we've had a lot of discussions, including a very good discussion about two weeks ago, about the budget, and a number of preliminary discussions, particularly on the school committee side, for the last few months. So, I'm sure that many in the audience are aware of, you know, a lot about the budget already, so I'm not going to go into too many details about what we're dealing with. I just, you know, would like to make a statement tonight about that, you know, I really feel that the school department has been very responsible in its budgeting over the last few years. And ironically, it just turns out that the number of increased funding for the town, 3.39%, is exactly the amount of increase that we have received from town funding for the past four years. So, in that perspective, it really shows that, you know, we have been, you know, being very creative to do the kind of programming that we're able to do in this district with years where, you know, the economy is difficult, and we're not dealing with very much of an increase, if an increase at all, in some of the recent years. So, it's been difficult. And, you know, we were at a point last year where we had to give some bad news about, you know, our funding to some teams. We had to change our busing schedule, and that changed our school schedule. And, you know, a lot of other little items that don't necessarily make the news so much, but they still hurt. And they hurt in many different places around the school community, even supplies. I can't tell you how much you can have a heated discussion over supplies with a principal of a school, for instance, when that principal is used to having certain kinds of supplies to support the programming, and no longer has it anymore. Where that kind of an item may not really make news all that much, and people may not totally understand what it is. But we have been certainly doing more with less over the last few years. And we have a great school department. In all of the ways that school departments are measured in the state of Rhode Island, North Kingston usually ends up somewhere in the top 10 for its achievement, including this year, one of our schools was considered a leading school, Wickford Middle School. And that, I'm not exactly sure of the number, but that is relatively few schools in the state of Rhode Island. That's maybe in the teens. About 15 schools got that designation. One of our elementary schools, Hamilton Elementary, was named a commended school. It's one of eight elementary schools in the state to receive that designation by the Department of Education. And Stony Lane School was also named a leading school, but received recognition, and their application is in right now. They've been nominated by Commissioner Gists and the Department of Education for a national blue ribbon. There's no more prestigious award than that in education. So, obviously, things are going well. And, you know, not all of our schools have those kinds of designations, but they're all very good, and you can compare them anywhere in the state of Rhode Island, and we look very good. We also are fortunate enough to, you know, while we're in the top 10 group all the time for our academic achievement, we're in the lowest group for per pupil expenditure. We're about 13th from the lowest, and that's with 36 districts in the state of Rhode Island. So, we're doing something right. And it has a lot to do with performing well while budgeting very conservatively, and I hope there's some recognition of that from the community. And, you know, I welcome people's comments tonight. They're very helpful to hear what people have on their minds. Obviously, our budgeting relates as closely as anything does to the kind of programming that we have, and the kind of school district we want to have, and the kind of community that we want to be. So, I for one, and I know members of the school committee and Town Council as well, are very interested in hearing from the community about, you know, what you feel is important, and where do you think we should be putting our funding? So, that's my introduction for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ogier. Did you want to take citizens' comments later, or when did you want to take those?
No. That's really the purpose of tonight, is to just really open it up to the public and let the public tell us what they think about the preliminary budget.
All right. We have two people who have signed up. The first one is Greg Mancini.
My name's Greg Mancini. I'm from 61 Main Street. It's my understanding we're talking about the entire budget, if I may, kind of in its entirety. Not only speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Suzanne, but I'm also speaking on behalf of the 40 parents whose kids play, whose kids are student athletes and play the sport of hockey. Over the years, North Kingston's invested a substantial amount of money in their education, and we think they've gotten great results. In fact, I think that's why many people have moved here, because of the education system in our town. I'm a lawyer by trade. I've done some real estate law. I'm part owner of a real estate company. And I'm probably not telling anything to you, but the fact of the matter is, when people talk about North Kingston, they talk about what a great desirable community is. And the reason why they do that is because it's got a great school system. And that is because, like I said, I think over the years, we've invested in education. We would hate to see the town kind of cut short that investment, or this cumulative investment over many years. We think you cannot invest enough in education. We can tell you, as parents of student athletes in this town, in this high school, that high school's not getting everything they want. We are a perfect example of that. The high school last year completely cut our sport. This year, they may or may not cut our sport, or for our kids' sport. We think this is unfortunate, that some student athletes are being treated different than other student athletes. Nevertheless, we know that the school administration and the school committee is doing the best they can, presenting a balanced budget for approval to the Town Council. So, we encourage you to support and approve this budget as is, because we think it represents a continued investment in education in our town, but also doesn't give the school administration everything they need. And I think that our kids are a perfect example of that, in that they are being denied, or last year they were denied, and this year, I don't know, but they are sacrificing, I should say, is probably a more appropriate word, themselves some extra school activities, excuse me, that they may, could have otherwise had in other communities. We just want you to keep the ball rolling and continue the investment, and I think if you stop investing in schools now, it's going to undermine the investment that the town's made over a number of years. Those are all the comments I have. If anyone wants to ask me any questions, I'm more than happy to ask you, answer. I would just leave by saying, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of myself and my spouse, but 40 other parents who are concerned about education in our community, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
The next person who's signed up is Rob Perry.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Rob Perry, 95 Meadowland Drive. I wanted to come up because I wanted to say a couple of things about Stony Lane School, and about just how, you know, we've got Blue Room of Schools, we've got accommodations and all that. I just want to make sure that everyone doesn't rest on their laurels. You know, we've got these things, the kids are doing a lot of work, the school department's doing a lot of work. We need to support them and provide them with money. And I'm actually not even saying keep it level. I'm saying we need to give more money to the school departments. There's programs like Full Day K. There's programs like the fact that our schools, our elementary schools, a couple of them start at 9:25 in the morning, and you've got five, six, seven-year-olds getting out of school at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. That is not conducive to the education of our children. And we've got a lot of communities in the state, for instance, having Full Day K. You talk to teachers in the departments from other school systems, from our school system, and they say, "The things that we get to teach these childrens nowadays are the same things that we all learned in first grade." How can you teach a full-day curriculum to a student when they're only in school for half a day? So, it's things that need to be looked at. And I want also to say that I appreciate what Dr. Ogier has done, and things that he's mentioned in regards to adding revenue to the school system, and adding revenue to the school department, as opposed to just keep expending that money. But I think that you need to take a look at some of these other programs that are out there, and some of the other things that we can do to increase our school systems, and not just keep, you know, seeing how little we can get by each year. So, if there's any questions, for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but, thank you.
Thank you. That is all that is on my list. Is there anybody out there that isn't on the list that would like to come up and speak? Please do. Just state your name and address, please.
My name's Gregory Blasberg, 70 Whitman Drive. First, I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work that goes into this part of the calendar year, every year, as both the school committee and the Town Council gets into budgets. It's one of the most difficult things that you do, and a lot of difficult choices need to be made. And I want to thank you for also what I see as, what I think as an observer, is a particularly good year for intercommunication between the two sides. I know Councilman McKay sat on the school committee budget subcommittee. We both attended a number of meetings, and I think that was a real step in the right direction to help the council to understand just exactly what it is on the school side that is resulting in, you know, frankly, an increase in the appropriations that they're looking for. And as you know, on the town side and the school side, things don't stay the same. The cost of everything goes up every year, as we all know. Unfortunately, that also tends to impact our tax bills. But at the same time, and I think you know, but I like to stress, as some of the other parents did this evening, I'm also a parent of children, and whether you're a parent or not in this community, our schools are a vital part of our community. And whether it is a purely economic reason, which is that our good school department supports our property values, or a social one, which is that it reflects, our good schools reflect upon the community that we live in, I think it's important that we remember that, you know, the schools are very important, and that they cannot be neglected. So, it's my hope that, well, you know, I don't think that anyone expects, you know, the school department to get a tremendous increase in funding. We want to make sure that the amount that is given is adequate, and I certainly hope that you're not looking at what has happened in some previous years where it's a level funding. I don't think that that's what you're looking at, but I think it's very important that you look at the needs that the schools have, which I think Dr. Ogier has communicated pretty well. And remember that the amount that you fund does directly, maybe not right away, impact the programs that you see, because some of the budget cuts and difficulties of the past have resulted in cuts to specific programs that, you know, do affect the children. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you very much again for your time.
Thank you.
Jim McQuinn, 412 Chimney Rock. Let me start out by saying that North Kingston is a, and has been, a tremendous school district. My daughter went through, and I traveled to Peabody, Mass. every day so that my daughter could stay in this school's district. She's receiving her master's degree this year. But most of my focus since she's graduated has not been on the advanced placement kids, but working with kids that aren't going to college, because I'm very concerned with those children. They're sort of left behind, and that's something we need to focus on. We've got great teachers, but we had a computer certification course here in 2004, I think. We don't have that anymore. If you talk to Mike, our town IT director, he went through it, Wes Walwick, I think. Walwick, I'm sorry. The Cisco Certification Program gives kids an opportunity right out of school. I would, to the gentleman who talked about hockey, I have, for a number of years, supported hockey in the other teams, and specifically identified that we had money in the budget to do it. We cut hockey, and when I was looking at the budget, and people know I do, I noticed that travel expense for administrators, the ice time was cut, and within a couple hundred dollars, there was an increase in travel expense for administrators for the same amount. Same year, we had an administrator leave with less than three-quarters of the way through the year. Ended, the appropriate amount for his salary was $104,000. He ended the year at $102,000, then was paid a week during July, so that apparently he could retire with five years in. I have it well documented, be more than happy to share it with the council and anyone else. He left on March 23rd. He was only missing 120 hours as of June 30th. He made up 120 hours in the month of July. School committee approved that he would come in part-time in May for 20 hours a week. It's impossible. There's money right there that could have funded hockey. I can give you a hundred ways. Davis Elementary School, it's been closed for a number of years, is costing us $100,000 a year. We don't need it. We had Wickford Elementary that cost the school district, and now costing the town money. We don't need it. I will say that I look at the budget, and I make a living doing due diligence. And it's not hard. I look at the town audit, and there's a number of things in the town audit that don't reconcile with the budget. We keep on hearing that we've lost, you know, the number of teachers have been cut and whatnot. Difference between 2003 and 2012, according to the audit, is one teacher. There were two more schools in 2003. Executive administrators in 2003, they were 20. According to the audit, 2012 ended with 16. Seems that the support staff was the one that was cut. This was before outsourcing. It was 2028, 228 in 2003, only 206 in 2012. A 4.3% cut. Do you want to know what happened on the town side? Town side is very different. 13.68% cut in town departments. Some departments were cut by 25%. It's in the audit. Page 144. Look in the town audit. It's online. It doesn't reconcile with the information that's been published on the school budget. Cost per pupil, it's gone up. 2003, it was $10,694. 2009, it was $13,702. 2012, it was $14,556. $14,556. A $4,373 increase in the cost per pupil. Any guesses on how much the cost for Jamestown tuition went up during that period? It went up $1,000. It went up 6%, while the cost per pupil in our schools went up 36%. The town manager, with, under direction of the Town Council, sent letters in 2011 and 2012, asking Jamestown for the bonding costs that they have been paying for 30 years. He said in his letter, and it was backed up by a letter from the Commissioner of Education, he said the bonding cost, $3.9 million for this place, and we are increasing the bonding costs, $3.9 million for schools, which doesn't show up in the budget. Doesn't show up in the cost of schools. He asked Jamestown, something they had been paying for this building and the building before, would you pay $262,000 for 2012, $263 for 2013, and $254,000 for 2014? That's $780,000 of lost income. $780,000. Add that up to the $100,000 that it's costing to keep Davisville Elementary School open, you're well over $1 million. There is no reason to cut, and I say this every year, to cut sports or to cut student programs. There's reason to cut administrative expenses and overhead, and silver parachutes given to certain administrators that are very costly. And I have the documentation that supports everything I just said. And then when you look at this year's budget and last year's budget, I've identified that the budget doesn't balance. There's thousands of negative line items. There's 500 line items, over 500, that have expenses, some over, you know, $200,000. They don't have either an original appropriation or a adjusted budget. We need to get this in control. And quite frankly, the reason why the school budget isn't, and what's the, what is the balance at the end of the year? How much was left over at the end of last year? Does anybody know? Can anybody account for that money? Is it a million? Is it $600,000, or is it $300,000? And these reserves, are they real, or are they sort of like putting money away someplace? That's money that could be used for kids. We should start using it for kids. And I know Greg just said, "Our property value's going up." We all got a revaluation, our property values didn't go up. I know people in other states, their property values did go up. I got an email today of another state where their taxes went down because they're bringing in jobs. We have to be careful. This state is not doing well. We have to put, and by the way, the median income since 2003 in North Kingston, we've got more people, but the median income has gone down. In 10 years, the median income has gone down. Again, I didn't make that up. I didn't get it from some third party. I got it from the town financial audit. There's a couple pages on here that I think we ought to be looking at and reconcile to what the budget says. We have fewer kids, we have two fewer schools in 2003, our cost per pupil is up significantly. And 2009, the year they picked, was the stimulus year. President Obama was elected, and the first thing he did was he did the stimulus, and that went to schools. And we all know the discussion about whether the schools were going to get stimulus or not. But that's why 2009 was a little bit higher. Ask you to do your due diligence. Make sure the kids' programs are funded, and make sure that this budget and the next budget is accurate, transparent, and fair. And fair, Jamestown's getting a great deal. And in their response to Mr. Embry, they said, "We'd be happy to sit down and talk about this. We preferred paying our bond cost, but it was unilaterally put in front of us not to." That was the response. They pay on the same house price about half of the real taxes that we pay in North Kingston. And our income has gone down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak in citizens' comments?
The issue of the bond is a longstanding one, and it was...
Could you just state your name, please?
Julia Held. I'm Jamestown representative from our school committee to the North Kingston School Committee. The issue of the bond payments is one that has reared its head for a number of years, and the position of Jamestown has always been that we have paid and continue to pay our fair share of the costs of the North Kingston buildings. It was because the payment of the bond between the school department and the town in North Kingston, between your school department and the town, turned out to have been somewhat difficult, that Jamestown renegotiated in its tuition figure, the last negotiation for the contract, shares of administrative costs rather than any designated portion towards the bond. The figures represent a fair share of the administrative costs, as far as we're concerned, and as far as I think, business managers in years past and currently have determined them. And as Dr. Ogier has expressed, and Phil Thornton before him had expressed, we do not have any real interest in the building. We do not have a use of the building. We are, in effect, tenants of your building. We have no control over its maintenance, we have no control over anything that happens with the building. So, paying for the building specifically didn't make too much sense. And the negotiated tuition figure included increases to some of the administrative costs that were probably a more fair thing for us to be paying. As far as our per pupil costs, they have been incorrectly stated in some things. I'm happy to see. Thank you very much for the note in your latest budget book that our per pupil costs are not the $24,000 plus that have been stated in some figures, because our high school students don't get counted towards Jamestown's total number of students. They actually get counted for you, because you are educating them. So, our total expenditures are only getting divided by the number of K-8 students that we've had. Our per pupil, per pupil costs are somewhat higher than yours. We do not have any of the economies of scale that larger districts enjoy. But, again, many of us in Jamestown fail to see the relevance of our costs of educating the students to the tuition that we pay you. We pay based on your per pupil costs and the audited figures of the per pupil costs. They have gone up in the last couple of years because of the race to the top funds, which we expect will be not so much factor in years to come. But, the tuition contract was negotiated in good faith. We feel that we are paying a reasonable amount. We contribute well over $1 million a year to your school district in excess of what it costs you to educate Jamestown students. That has been something that business managers have said for years, that you have a net revenue of well over $1 million from having Jamestown students here. We agree that you have a great school system. We like being able to send our students to your high school. The continued characterization of Jamestown somehow as sort of parasites on North Kingston is pretty offensive, frankly. And I wish it didn't exist. I would be happy to answer. The other statement that I take exception to is the issue of Commissioner Gist's support, the letter that your town manager had sent to our school committee. Most of us, with a couple of exceptions, nobody in Jamestown, but apparently the gentleman who was speaking had a different interpretation. We interpreted her response as meaning that the negotiation of the bond was between your North Kingston School Department and Town Council. A couple of people have chosen to interpret it as it should be, between your town and our school department, which I don't think if you read the sentence grammatically the way most people would read it, would be anyone's interpretation. But, it's an issue. Marshall Lukan, our superintendent, met with your town manager, and I believe the matter was settled. I think that's it.
Mr. Ogier?
Richard.
Richard August, 79 Apple Tree Court. I was a member of the audit committee and chairman of the audit committee. And because Mr. McGwin and Mr. Mudge perennially bring up the issue of the Jamestown tuition, when I was on the audit committee, we did ask the auditors to look at the calculation and the accounting for Jamestown tuition. The bond issue is, was a factor in the calculation of the amount of tuition. I haven't looked at it recently, but it was at that time. And the auditors found that there was no issue with the accounting for or the handling of the Jamestown tuition in the calculation. I just want to make that clear, that it has been looked at by outside parties.
Thank you, Mr. August.
I will say at the council that tomorrow night on our agenda, one of the things we have is to appoint a committee to talk to Jamestown again. It's been a number of years since we have negotiated our contract, so we do look at it periodically. And so tomorrow night, we'll appoint members to again, just look at the contract again, make sure that we're both on the same page, that sort of thing, for this summer.
Dr. Ogier?
I just want to quickly, you know, I went into this in great detail last time we met, so I don't feel the need to go too deep. But, you know, I just want to point out that the number that we have with Jamestown was negotiated in good faith. It represents the high school number, which is a smaller number in every district than the middle or elementary school numbers. And it takes out the transportation cost because Jamestown transports themselves. And that's basically the deal in a nutshell. And, you know, it just seems to me that if I were living in Jamestown, that's the kind of deal that I would want. And I'm sure that Mr. Mudge and Mr. McGwin would be the first ones, living in Jamestown, to advocate for exactly that deal if they were living there. It's fair. And so this will come up again. We negotiated that deal a few years ago. We're going to negotiate again. And it will be done transparently and in good faith. And we'll see where that goes. But to insinuate that somehow Jamestown is a bunch of freeloaders helping themselves to our education system is absolutely foolish. They bring tremendous amount to this school system and to this high school, and we are fortunate to have them. And every other superintendent that I know of would be absolutely thrilled to have such a deal. If we didn't have those students in our high school, the revenue that they bring into this district, we would be having a very different conversation tonight about the problems with our budget. I just need people to be aware of that.
I would like to respond to something.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Welch.
Are we going to have a debate between the audience?
No, we're not going to have a debate. This is just come up and...
After someone uses my name...
Actually, I'd like to hear this, please.
After someone uses my name twice, I am not disparaging Jamestown. By the way, my family comes from Jamestown, and many still live there. I am not disparaging Jamestown. I am simply providing facts. It's hard to reconcile a 6% increase in tuition from Jamestown versus a 37% increase in the cost per pupil to North Kingston residents. You can't reconcile that. That's not Jamestown's fault. It is, I have never said that Jamestown has not acted in good faith. In fact, I quoted the letter saying they were willing to talk about it. So I have not put any aspirations on Jamestown. It is, I have questions with the audit and what's in the budget, and they're factual questions.
I did see Mr. Bussgard in the back, so Mr. Bussgard, if you'd like to join us up here, you're more than welcome.
You can't hide back there, John. Come on back. Without adding fuel to any fire, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Title 16, as far as I know it, is, it gives school committees your individual legal right to negotiate contracts. This is a legal contract that the school committee negotiates from time to time with Jamestown. It is not the town, it is the school committee's effort. It's the contract between our school committee and Jamestown. Some people may like the result, some people may not, but that is within the purview of your school committee to do so. And, you know, we can criticize it, we can say it should be more, it should be less, but it is up to your school committee to do your due diligence. And I think, Kim, you said tomorrow you'll convene a committee to look at it again. That's your job, that's your legal, under Title 16, that is what you are supposed to do. So, you know, I've got faith that your committee will take a look at this and go forward with it.
Yes, we will. So I feel as if we have a very good relationship with Jamestown, and I know I have a good working relationship with Mrs. Held and also Kathy Kaiser, their chair. And so this will just be a continuing discussion and negotiation between both sides.
I don't see anybody else coming up. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
If not, Kim, I don't know if you wanted to give your committee members a chance to say closing words or not.
It's up to you. Yes, I will let them do that because normally everybody likes to say something while, since we're all together, one of the few times we get together. So I'll go ahead and go down the table. Mrs. Clerken?
You caught me off guard there. This is my first time going through this budget process. It's been certainly an eye-opening experience. I know, I think we've done a good job of, and Dr. Ogier and Mrs. King, of putting together a budget that I think is fair. We continually keep cutting all these programs. And as some of the commentators said in the public comments initially, we have a great school system, and we need to keep it that way. So I think, you know, I hope that we'll be funded as much as we've asked for. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I would thank all the people who came out tonight, to whether you spoke or not. Appreciate the fact that you take time to come out here and listen to this. And, I don't know, sadly to say that in a 60-plus million dollar enterprise, that perhaps more of our citizens would take an interest in coming out. I would also like to say that, you know, going forward, in the next couple of years, I think there's a new strategic plan that needs to come due. Later on, in a couple of months, Dr. Ogier let us know that the high school self-study, the high school's up for reaccreditation. And part of that is a self-study where the district has, and the high school leadership and community has really taken a look at, you know, where we want to head, you know, the operations, not only the operations, but all our educational practices at the high school and where we're moving. And I think that looking forward and having a vision and having strategic plans and having a real thoughtful look at what's educationally effective practices for the 21st century so we can keep aligning resources to that. I think as a community, we need to keep pressing forward on thinking about doing things differently, being innovative, trying to push where we can push. Some of that involves resources. Hopefully, some of that may actually end up saving us resources down the road if we can think of ways of collaborating more with the town. I think some things, you know, we're one big town, we're one big enterprise, and the more we can knock down areas where we have in common and either share things, large and small, down the road, I think will only stead the town better in the future. So I look forward, you know, in the future, not only as we get through this cycle, but really putting out more information to the town that really tells a story of where our dollars are going and the product that we produce out of that. So the townspeople have confidence and faith of the investment they're making in their school system. Thank you.
Mr. Bussgard?
Thank you, Ms. Page. I apologize for being late. I cut the tail end of the town presentation on their budget. I got called out, personal matter, so I missed most of the school department. So I just want to ask a couple of questions. Pardon me if I'm duplicating anything that happened earlier. When, Mr. Welsh, when, say the golf course, something goes wrong at the golf course, let's say the roof goes, falls in at the golf course, how is that funded? How's the roof for the golf course funded?
Well, if there was something wrong with it, what do you mean? You have to replace the roof? It'd come out of the general fund, I would guess.
Yeah, the golf course is not required to have a capital improvement fund on their own, are they?
Okay.
Right? Yeah, I'm just asking to play along.
Yep.
My point is, if the golf course or any other department of the town is not required to have a capital improvement fund that they fund on their own, why is the school, why are we required to fund our own capital improvement fund? I think we do a pretty good job maintaining our buildings on an annual basis on the daily wear and tear. But for us not to be funded, for the town not to fund the school capital improvement fund, to maintain town buildings, I find to be just a little bit off kilter. The buildings are owned by the town, yet they do not want to provide funding to make sure that anything over and above daily maintenance is taken care of. So what you're saying is that basically you are tacitly approving every bond issue that the school puts out because you're, it has to deal with capital improvement. That is an issue that I think needs to be addressed, and it's a shame that the wonderful, and I want to thank Dr. Ogier and Mary, I think you guys put, I think you put together, at the behest of my badgering and some other members of the school committee, you put together a nice recap of the school budget, I thought. And for anybody on the towns council that says it was difficult to understand, I find that to be disingenuous because that made it very simple to understand. Those are my two issues, and those are the things I really hoped that we could overcome this time. But it appears that the issues run deeper than anybody cares to admit. I just wish that we could see through the crap and the fog and realize that we're working on this together. These buildings belong to the town, they belong to the taxpayers, and when we don't look at it that way, I think we're being shortsighted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bussgard.
So now's my turn. You know, I've sat here for six years that I've come in and had some sort of a conversation with the town council. And there've been some years that I must admit I've lobbied heavier than others. I always appreciate you guys coming over here to talk to us and, because it's our chance to express to you our needs, our wants, and those sort of things. One of the things I remember at the meeting that y'all had over at Beechwood about a week ago, was just the idea of needing to do education differently. And I embrace that. And it's one of those things of, as I've been in my, I think I've told you all that I'm going back to school in higher ed. And one of the things we're looking at is how do you do things differently? And how do you change the way we look at things? How do you do things more efficiently? And there are 10 of us in our cohort, or actually eight now, and there are about the same number in the one for secondary education. And this is a program that's been going on for the last 10 years at least. And so far, while we've had lots of good ideas, we haven't made any real super huge changes in how we deliver education. But the things we have been able to do here at North Kingston is we've been able to become one of the top schools in the state with our AP scores. We've been able to come up with our kneecap scores, too. So it's a sort of thing of maybe we don't do it entirely differently, but what we are doing, we do it pretty well. And I think that is the thing that we struggle with all the time, is how can we do it better knowing that our costs, like your costs, are going up all the time? That's the thing that we're looking at in our budget. Some of our biggest challenges in our budget are some of our special education costs, and that those are the costs that we don't have as much control over. At the end of April, Dr. Ogier is going to be making a presentation, and he's asked to give us some ideas of some of the things that we can do. And I don't have any ideas, I'm certainly not going to put him on the spot tonight because he hasn't, he's given us loose ideas, but I haven't sat down with him to discuss that in any detail. But just being able to get to a place where we're servicing all our students is why we have asked for the budget that we have. Because we meet challenges like, just as you do in your budgeting. I don't envy your position. I appreciate you letting us come here and advocate for our budget, and I wish you the best of luck in making that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I'm looking down on this end to see if I indulge any council members, see if they have any comments that they would like to add. Mr. McKay?
You know, I ran for school, I ran for town council. I've lived in the town my whole life. I attended Wickford Elementary, Wickford Middle, North Kingston. I went to the University of Rhode Island. I've never been without a job. I've worked my little tail off to get where I am today. And I find myself in a position where I'm having to question whether or not someone would question me to say that I have a commitment of any kind towards my community, towards my state. The only thing that I see is that we need a very clear, transparent path to all these budgets, whether it's Jamestown, whether it's our own budgets, whether it's capital improvements. We need the organization of the school committee to make sure that they've identified what funding they need, where it's going to go. And I think clarity of all these points makes our lives a lot easier, and we don't necessarily have to go through these processes all the time. Certainly, I, above anybody else, having a business here, understand the need to have great house values and also to have a very strong educational system. I will contend right along that it is not the amount of money that you throw at a problem, the people that you throw at the problem that create the best solutions. And apparently, we have done a fairly good job in our own town, keeping our budgets in line with people like all of us sitting up in front of you who are committed to our towns. So, you know, going forward here, it's not a debate. I'm sitting on the subcommittee for the budget. I'm very interested in your school budget. I think there's more collaboration that's taken place today than there has in the past few years. So I think moving forward, yes, we're all interested in making this a sound program even better than what it is. But it's not always throwing gobs of money at a problem that creates a better solution. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate something that I know I said a few weeks ago, and perhaps it wasn't clear, but I wanted to specifically thank Mrs. King for putting together for me and for this committee a budget this year, which was, I thought, the most readable budget. It had text, I need text. I needed text. And I found that the document that I have in front of me, not right here, was very well-done. So I don't want anybody to misconstrue my thought, or I think anybody on this council, that, you know, some of us are new. I've been doing this for a while. This was a well-done budget from a reader's point of view. And again, I want to thank you for that.
I have to say, the town manager...
I have to say, the town manager, before we had even seen the budget, said it was a well-done budget, the readability.
Do we need a motion then? Will we take a motion to adjourn for the evening?
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.